My city clerk.
Favorite part of tonight, a featured pet presented by Megan. Fortunately, we are having some technical difficulties, so we're not able to put up the agenda, but we are working on it.
Good evening. We welcome Lola. She is a German Shepherd mix, one year and one month. She is loving and energetic. She's very friendly. And she was picked up on an injured dog call, but she has since fully recovered and loves to play, loves to give loves and likes to be held like a baby, as you can tell. And she's available for no adoption cost, and we would love for her to go to one of your homes.
Brianna E., that new house, new dog? Thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation, introductions and awards. We have the intern presentation to City Council. Serena?
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce our interns who have joined us this season. Throughout this program, these individuals have been gaining hands-on experience in municipal government while providing valuable support to our departments. I'd like to introduce to you Roman Diaz, Caroline Connell, Evelyn Garza, and Michaela Ayon. Each of these individuals will be presenting a PowerPoint that they have been working on, so I will go ahead and let them take the lead.
Erica, can we use your passport?
Good evening, council members and members of the community. My name is Roman Diaz, and I am currently in the Finance Department internship or an intern in the Finance Department for the City of McFarland. In this presentation, I would like to highlight my journey throughout this internship and the projects and knowledge I have acquired during this time. This presentation will include a brief background of my hobbies and current status, a breakdown of the Finance Department, and some new knowledge and projects that I have been working on, as well as some recommendations. I was born and raised in McFarland, graduated from McFarland High School. I have three-plus years in the U.S. Army currently as a water treatment specialist. I am majoring in Applied Mathematics at American Military University, and I aspire to get my CPA, which is, for those that don't know, a certified or public accountant. So the Finance Department in the City of McFarland is broken down into three divisions and multiple subdivisions. First, we have the accounts receivable, which can be broken down to utility billing, billing permits, businesses, business licenses, rentals, citations, and state and federal revenue. Then we have the payable or accounts payable, which includes all city expenses, department expenses, contractors, and our accounting software services. Some additional divisions include payroll, accounting, and yearly or bi-yearly audits. So some projects that I have been working on during this internship journey include a utility liens reconciliation, which is a brief background, a legal claim placed on a property by, in this case, the city, when the property owner fails to pay utility bills. So this project benefits the community in securing city services, which are paid and for and maintain city staff operations. During this project, I was scanning, uploading, and reviewing new liens, and upon further supervision, creating and issuing new liens. Another project is business licensing. So a business license is an official permission to conduct your business in the City of McFarland. This helps ensure complacency with city ordinance and community safety. So in this project, I was reviewing unpaid licenses and contacting existing businesses to making sure that they will continue or not continue to conduct business in the City of McFarland. The next project is records and retention. So these records include invoices, tax forms, contracts, and many more. In this project, I and fellow interns, fellow interns, were preserving and going through filing to see if these records were current and/or if they needed to be shredded away. The last project in this short timeframe that I have been an intern is an invoice coding guide, which an invoice is a document a business sends to a customer to request payment for their goods or services. So this benefits consistency and accuracy in the city expenses and reporting. In this project, I was reviewing each department's previous use of vendors and compiling them into a list for future uses in each department. Some new knowledge that I have attained as an intern is using Tyler, which is no, not a person's name, but an accounting software's name that utilizing billing and other uses for the Finance Department. Also, a big part is customer relations, which is communicating effectively and professionally to customers, for example, business owners, and navigating different questions and providing appropriate solutions. The last is city operations, which is understanding how different departments operate and collaborating and communicating with those different departments. Some recommendations for future use for this internship program is to promote opportunities in classrooms and college campuses, and also to continue to provide community outreach programs. Thank you. That is all. And my next fellow intern will be next to present. Yes?
Thank you, Roman. I did forget to mention, we do have a translator.
Hello, my name is Caroline, and this is my presentation on my experience as an administrative intern here at McFarland City Hall. To begin, I'm just going to introduce myself about, I come from McFarland. I've lived here my entire life. And I'm currently going to UC Davis studying molecular and medical microbiology. And I currently aspire to enter the medical field in the future. And to go into my position as an administrative intern, my primary project has been working on records retention, where we have many old documents that have piled up over the years, and we are currently sorting them using a specific retention schedule to ensure that, to ensure that documents that need to be kept are kept and documents that are no longer useful can be purged. And this is very important, as I will go into in a moment. And I've additionally worked on the petition signature counting, the preliminary signature counting, where I check addresses and ensure that these signatures are able to be counted before we send them off to the county. I've also worked on meeting minutes and labeling and filing of new documents that come in to ensure that organization stays as organized as possible. Going into my primary project of records retention, I've come in and seen documents as old as 1955, and they're from all departments, Public Works, Finance, Community Development, the fire department that apparently we used to have. Yeah, they, some of them are very, very outdated. And I used our records retention sheet to make sure that I discard documents that we don't, no longer need to keep because they're either outdated or they've been superseded, there's a newer version, such as old agreements or sometimes an excessive amount of copies that could be purged. And also to make sure we keep important documents such as audits and financial statements and water testing records. And this is very important because without organization, we can't properly ensure that we have these documents and be able to recall in the case that we need these documents. Some of the skills that I've learned in this internship have been different methods of organizing, such as like chronological organizing, which is more important for documents that are more similar to one another, except for small differential traits such as dates, like agendas. And also alphabetical organization, which is more important for stuff like agreements where they're very different and it makes more sense to organize them by name. And I've also learned about writing meeting minutes, which is important in understanding how to create a very short but sweet and able to have all the details of a formal meeting while also not making it too long. I came into this internship to broaden my horizons, and coming in, I knew just about nothing about how city council works or city hall or how governments work. And I could really say that I learned a lot because I came in not knowing how to read documents. And I came in and I learned. And I found that many actions that the city council and the city itself do have several steps in needing approval, and it can be very tedious on the inside. And it just gives me a new appreciation for the work that's done to keep our city not just running, but also thriving. And my final comments are, I'm very grateful for this program to give me the opportunity to learn so much about the city while also gathering new skills and polishing my pre-existing skills that I can take with me to further my career. The city staff and the council have been very welcoming and open to questions. And I've never felt afraid to ask questions about their position or if I need help. And I'm very thankful to all of them, but especially to Erica, who I was working under the most. She's been nothing but understanding and supportive as I've gained experience and ability in this position. And I hope I'll carry these for the rest of my life.
Thank you.
The next individual is Evelyn Garza, sorry.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Council and members of the community, so nice to see you. My name is Evelyn Garza, and I'm the Public Works intern here in McFarland. A little bit about myself, I'm a rising second-year civil engineering student at UCLA. I live here in McFarland, and I am a graduate from Caesar Travis High School in Delano. So thank you for having me. So just a little overview of my tasks and projects that my amazing supervisors and team members at the Public Works Department have given me, one of which is managing USA tickets, working on the ARC GIS maintenance and portal creating, construction plan reading and overview, as well as getting some hands-on experience in two projects, which I'm sure if you've been driving around McFarland, the West Kern Avenue project and the 2025 Street Rehabilitation Project. Okay, so just to start off, the USA N tickets, basically, I'll get an email program called USA N. But what I do is I set this imagine as just have the water and wastewater department go in there, go check out the site, and mark any utility lines that are on the site. So basically, this is important because it's a part of the call before you dig process, which ensures safety by marking the locations of underground utilities like gas, water, and electric lines. So they're just like the necessary steps that need to be taken before any construction, maintenance. Yeah, it protects your water from running when the maintenance guy needs to come out and do some work. So, super important. The really fun that I was given was working GIS portal with my supervisor and stormwater really big nation to both city staff members, particularly with Community Development and Parks Department, and also for residents of McFarland. Depth of view. Another next that I helped, looking over construction plans. Building that's so basically go through all the pictures and follow any callouts. That's, if you imagine what blueprints look like, everything is super detailed and intricate. So you kind of like go to any markings and then follow like a scavenger hunt, what detail is trying to point out. Basically, it's just to make sure we catch any inconsistencies and anything that might be kind of challenging to read once the contractor is out there building their project. Another thing I've done is calculated some jam widths, which I didn't know what was, but yearly's, we figured that out, which is basically calculating the depth of our, the dimensions of a door, which is super important because we all want our doors to close. So another thing is setting up just a centralized location for submittals, which is a bunch of paperwork and documents that contractors have to submit before they begin a project. So some takeaways from this have just been gaining hands-on experience and breaking down construction plans by identifying notations, interpreting specifications, and paying attention to detail. Okay, the next project that I did was helping out on the West Kern Avenue project. So here, I assisted and observed construction inspections. I also assisted in recording and organizing site data, and then documenting and logging information. So obviously, this was a road reconstruction. So I was able to kind of view and learn about the complete cycle or lifecycle of road reconstruction and then gain knowledge of asphalt paving. A really interesting thing that I learned was how concrete is put in place and how detailed and specific you have to be. It gets down to very like pretty nitty-gritty numbers. Also, inspecting ADA ramps, making sure those are compliant, and everyone has the ability to be mobile and get around with the new construction. And then also striping and detailing, just how detailed and how specific you have to be when you're just simply drawing a white line on the floor. Like, that's definitely one thing that I've learned a lot. Some things you overlook have a really big impact on people. And also just observing real-life problems, sometimes a simple water hydrant will send you back a couple hours in a project. So that was really cool to see engineers and project managers kind of work through those kinds of issues. So yeah, the next project that I helped out on was the Ten Streets project, which is currently ongoing. I'm sure most of you have seen. So what I've done is kind of just gone through all the construction plans and created an Excel sheet and pointing out things that might be helpful to look out for once you're on the site. So for example, writing down how many new stop signs are needed down a specific road, or the striping plans, or ADA ramp specifications, and alley improvements. So yeah, some takeaways from this project have been how important it is to adapt to new challenges on a day-to-day basis, being able to enhance your flexibility and problem-solving skills. And then I've been exposed to processes and workflows that have been similar to the West Kern project. So being able to like retouch on those skills that I learned early on in the internship has been really cool. And then I also got to shadow the management of a citywide project, making sure I can see the alignment across different tasks and different teams. So this project has been a pretty big one for the department, and it's been really cool and informational. And I've learned a lot just seeing how everyone within Public Works kind of ties together to make sure this runs really smoothly and cohesively. So that's been really fun. So that wraps up all the main projects that I've helped out with. So some of the main skills that I've gained is just working with GIS programs or working with digital programs, being exposed to just the terminology and process of road construction. I know I'm studying civil engineering, but honestly, there's only so much you can learn on a piece of paper and being told it from a professor. So being able to just hear those words coming from a professional has really changed my perspective and purpose in what I'm studying. So and then understanding ADA requirements, centralizing and organizing information, how important that is because everything would just be complete chaos if that wasn't the case. Communication skills, construction plan reading and project management. And then some of the just general lessons learned have been that there are countless fine details that happen behind the scenes to bring a project to life. And yeah, so it's super detailed. Having teamwork, clear communication, and accountability are super vital to a successful outcome. And then that this field requires a lot of people skills. Just going out to site and talking to contractors, even just the workers, the labors, the masons, like having conversations with them and making sure everything's running clearly, super important. But yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for your time and attention, especially thank you to the Public Works Department, Padraig, and yearly's for being such great mentors and teachers throughout this whole process. I really, really appreciate this program, and of course, being able to help my own city somewhere where I learn and be able to see, you know, the, what goes on behind the scenes and the public work side of things has been a true blessing, honestly. So thank you guys so much, and we'll invite up our next intern. Thank you.
And the next individual is Michaela Ayon.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michaela Ayon. And before I begin, I want to emphasize that this SWOT analysis that I will be presenting is not intended to discount or minimize the hard work of the Parks and Recreation District or the importance it holds in our community. Parks and Recs provides vital services that enrich the quality of life for our residents and that is deeply valued. This analysis is simply a body of research meant to explore strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats in an event of a possible transition. Beyond that, it gives us insight into areas where we, as a city, might improve or find new opportunities to support Parks and Recreation District moving forward. The goal here is to add perspective and create a foundation for thoughtful discussion, not to criticize or diminish the contributions already being made. So to begin with, the introduction, this SWOT analysis is going to be an overview of my assigned department and responsibilities, skills, skills and knowledges I've gained, and key takeaways from the experience just working in local government. So a little bit about myself, I am one of the Community Development interns here at the City of McFarland. In the fall, I will be starting my third year at UCLA, where I am on the pre-law track, majoring in Sociology and Labor Studies. In Community Development, I have worked across various areas. From marketing to community planning, I have contributed to graphics being marketed, assisted with the Freedom Fest, and provided insight during the planning process. I have gained valuable insight experience in running audits for local websites, enhanced my research skills, and overall gained insight into the behind-the-scenes of operations of working in the public sector. Key takeaways from my experience in the local government include gaining a broader understanding of the marketing, coordination, and planning required to run a city efficiently and effectively. Today, I will be presenting the SWOT analysis on the Parks and Recreation District and ways to improve community programs and engagement within McFarland. The purpose of this SWOT analysis is to evaluate how well McFarland Parks and Recreation District communicates and serves the public. This relates to accessibility, the ease of use, being able to identify strategic areas for improvement and transparency. The angle of this contributes to the ideas of identifying problem areas, strengths, and opportunities to modernize, to better serve the public. So to begin with, I would like to point out some of the strengths of the McFarland Parks and Recreation District as already, that we, as we navigate through dissecting every aspect of communication, marketing, and public-facing processes. So some strengths include existing community trusts with in-person services, bilingual staff and materials, word-of-mouth and legacy marketing that reaches a loyal base, established routines and office availability for residents. So while reporting on strengths, I asked myself, do people understand what was being offered? So moving on to weaknesses, I reported on residents often have to call in or go in person to get information that may not be on local websites or social medias. As of now, there is online payment, but when I was doing this, there was no online payment for classes or rentals, over reliance of printed materials or walk-in traffic, inconsistent posting or updating information on social media platforms. And I reported on how unclear or inaccessible any of these steps are for signing up, paying, or asking questions. For example, so moving on to opportunities, by implementing mobile-first and more bilingual communication, it creates a more easily accessible way to get information, registration, or answer questions without having to go in person. The easier it is to access information, the more likely it is there are to complete actions. The McFarland Parks and Recreation has built a strong reputation for offering consistent sports programs over the years. However, there are areas where improvements could be made. Occasionally, seasons are delayed due to shortages of coaches or referees, or lower participation in certain sports can lead to inconsistencies within other programs. Bilingual access is a necessity in our town. With recreation offering full bilingual communication, it could alleviate confusion, allowing more people to participate. Overall, by implementing programs such as Civic Rec for rentals, payments, or signups, newsletters, it creates newsletters, clear and accessible information, mobile-first, and bilingual communication, recreation services will improve, ultimately supporting the broader goal of enhancing communication, marketing, and public-facing functions. So now, moving on, I had the opportunity to visit West Side Recreation and Park District in Taft, where they are very up to date with all of their Parks and Rec programs, and it was amazing to see. I wish you guys could see my presentation because their facilities are very nice. And I did a case study on the Recreation District, and it was to gather insight for a potential transition into managing Parks and Rec services directly. And the primary focus of this was looking at their successful program models, community partnerships, and operational infrastructure. community partnerships, and operational infrastructure. So to further elaborate, Westside operates with a team of four full-time administration staff and one full-time maintenance employee. To expand their capacity without inflating costs, they rely on a strategic network of part-time employees. They are transparent about these positions being stepping stones and are encouraged to grow beyond the district. This fosters strong, mutually supportive culture. They also rely on community volunteers to assist with serving as referees, practice facilitators, and event staff. They offer hundreds of programs with ages two to senior citizens. This wide variety ensures people of all ages can participate, truly reflecting the mission of a well-rounded recreation district. Westside's success is in its investments in partnerships and alternative funding strategies. They pursue relationships at every level. They promote sponsorships and naming rights, local organization partnerships, and government programs. Their most respected initiative is the STOP Program. A fund that covers all recreation fees for children from low-income households. This program is powered entirely by community and business contributions and exemplifies how private and public corporations can eliminate access, or can eliminate and access barriers for vulnerable residents. Moving on to facilities and revenue strategy, Westside facilitates, facilities are among the most advanced in the region. Their goal is to maximize both usage and revenue through diverse, diversified programs and smart design. Amenities include a full-size public pool and aquatic center, a large gymnasium, a modern weight room, cardio room, and a STEM room. To make recreation financially sustainable and accessible, they offer a variety of payment models such as day passes, monthly membership, annual memberships, and family packages. Their approach is designed to accommodate every type of user. They also have income through shared use agreements, like renting out local supplement companies inside the fitness area and partnering with the STEM-focused nonprofit located near the science rooms. Lastly, their youth and educational programming extends beyond traditional recreation to include an educational and enrichment opportunities like STEM Summer Program and an ongoing after-school program that combines homework, help, games, and learning opportunities. This not only keeps the youth engaged, but also creates an environment of growth and safety, especially for working, families seeking support after school. And then, on my next slide was a bunch of pictures from, um, their facilities in Taft. They have a state-of-the-art gym that serves not only the youth, but the elderly with inside track lines and pickleball courts. Their gym has up-to-date equipment along with a cardio room and has various types of cardio machines. Along with this, they even have a bowling alley where you can rent out a lane for a very feasible price and can be rented out to the community. Lastly, their pool that was built in the 1930s still functions to serve the community of Taft. These are the types of facilities that would better the activities of the Park Recreation District in McFarland and better serve the community's needs, um, if mimicked and brought back to McFarland. So, moving on, um, my proposal, by offering more programs beyond sports, the Parks and Recs can increase community participation. In this area, many arts programs are often out of reach, either due to financial or do, financial problems or due to distance. By providing accessible art and cultural programs locally, McFarland Parks and Recreation District creates new opportunities for residents who have never had the opportunity to experience such programs. Following this, I am proposing the idea of a micro-internship with McFarland High School students. This initiative would allow high school students involved in music, art, dance, and similar areas to volunteer as mentors in the Parks and Recreation programs. Students could either earn, earn community service hours or a small compensation. This internship benefits both the high school students by giving mentoring experience and the younger participants who gain access to peer role models. Due to the size of our town, opportunities in the arts are limited. So with the implementation of this program, we'll help bridge that gap. To further expand our community resources, First Five Current provides funding and program support, while Meals on Wheels offers free wheels, free meals to the elderly. This will be the first step in broadening resources to the community. These programs allow us to reach people of all ages and deliver them with essential support and resources. To help launch new programs and the proposed internship initiative, I recommend creating community feedback, feedback survey at local events. This would allow putting, this would allow getting input from community members about the types of programs they would like to see being offered. By involving community members in the planning process, we can ensure that programs will reflect the community's interests and needs, making them more successful and widely supported. So key takeaways, um, for McFarland is staff smarter, not bigger, tap local heavy he- hefty hitters, pilot-tiered access models, audit and monetize facility space, develop a McFarland Youth Access Fund, and plan long-term, act short-term. Westside offers a scalable, community-rooted model that McFarland can adapt to, to fit its size and resources. Build out McFarland's, by building out McFarland's internship program in a broader youth workforce pipeline, be, being a clear, being clear that roles are growth-focused and temporary, and this allows for a flexible staff while investing in future talent. Moving on to threats, community effectiveness, civic, this, um, accounts for civic planning, civic plus training, digital divide, miscommunication, or misin- or misinformation. And I evaluated on how prepared the department is to digitize and communicate. While planning for a larger recreation center should be a long-term goal, much of Westside's impact comes from the mindset and structure, not just buildings. Be, begin implementing what you can with what you have. And to wrap it up, I have a closing statement. So the purpose of this SWOT analysis was to evaluate how well McFarland Parks and Recreation communicates and serves the public. This relates to accessibility, the ease of use, being able to identify strategic areas for improvement and transparency. The angle of this contributes to the ideas of identifying problem areas, strengths, and opportunities to monetize and better serve the public. Through research, using comparable cities as case studies and the identif- and the dedication of Community Development Department and the staff of the City of McFarland, I am adamant that this SWOT analysis has provided valuable insights into ways to, into ways to help the Parks and Recreation District better serve the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all the interns. Do we have time for a quick picture with council?
Yeah, hold, hold on for a second.
Okay.
Uh, thank you for everybody for, for coming. Sorry for my tardiness, we're handling a very delicate situation, but, uh, we'll get into it later. Public, do we have any questions for any of our interns? Anybody? As far as specific departments, anything? No? Diego Rosenda raises his hand, but that might be about ten minutes. We actually run an organized meeting here.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank the, the City of McFarland, uh, Mr. Mayor, the council for allowing these students. Oftentimes, in small communities like ours, the access to internships, and especially these type of very, very specific, uh, internships, where they can get real-world experience are very limited. And so this was incredible. Looking forward to, to continuing this and partnering with, uh, with the City of, of McFarland as we continue to grow this for our current students, our recent graduates. Uh, these students are going to need, and we see this over and over and over again, they're going to need letters of recommendation, they're going to need references for jobs and careers and things like that, and this is where they make those contacts. So I wanted to thank Diego, to you and to your staff for, for making these opportunities available. Mr. Mayor, and to the council, thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to open up to the council. I'll start with, uh, Councilmember Gutierrez.
Well, I do want to tell the interns, thank you for your hard work. Um, I have seen evidence of your hard work, and thank you for a good job.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
This internship program is something amazing. I'm, I'm glad that we were able to offer it to these students. It opens up a, um, I guess maybe their vision of what they want to do, and it, it enables them to clarify if this is something that they really want to continue with. And, and I'm really grateful that we're able to provide this for them. And thank you for all your hard work that you did, and, and I really hope that you enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. I would really like to see those presentations, so maybe we can get them somehow. Um, great job on, on the work that you did. I, um, I was able to see you out there working, um, creating those videos for our community, uh, just all the work that you were doing, and I think that this will help you a lot in your future. And again, thank you a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I mean, you see the, the, um, the presentations, or you hear the presentations tonight, and, and you can already hear the professionalism from, from these, uh, young adults. And I say adults because they're already eighteen, right? And, um, it's amazing how, you know, I could, I, I heard Romans speak, you know, accounting names, you know, you're hearing the accounting team, and then the girls also. But it's important to understand that this is an opportunity, like, uh, Mr. Rosenda said, an opportunity of a job experience, because they go out there and, and, um, no one hires you with that experience. So the city gives that opportunity, so that's amazing to see you guys, the growth in you. I mean, I can't imagine what you guys are going to do out there, your education, your opportunities. Um, thank you, thank you for your help, thank you for everything you've done. I know that you've helped the city a lot, and we appreciate your help. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to finish off. Uh, I always like giving credit where credit, credit's due. Uh, I didn't think of this idea, actually it was Jordan Ayon that brought it to me a couple of years ago. Obviously, everything's a good idea until it's not, right? So Jordan came to me, I went to Diego, Diego, Serena, Megan, and, and the team, basically put all this together, but if, uh, these ideas come, you got to pitch it, you know? So, obviously, some of the parents are happy that their, their kids can stay home, uh, they're, they have a job, they're helping out with their expenses, and they're learning what, what real work is. Another thing, they get to relay the message, how expensive these roads are, because of pre-well and wages, right? So, and it's, it's good that our youth and, and maybe one of these days, these individuals will come back to work for the city, or they'll sit up here, take one of our, take one of the spots, and then just retaining this good talent, good talent and hard-working and just being complete. Even though we might make mistakes, the city's completely transparent, not trying to hide anything, very transparent as far as what we present. We're not trying to fudge any numbers or say, uh, different, differently, but I wanted to, I missed the presentations, but thank you for, for this. Um, and with that, we, we hope this, this is obviously going to continue with the high school and the continuing years. So, thank you again, and thank all the department heads for having the, that patience. But I've, we've gone nothing but glory reviews as far as what we have, as, as far as potential of all these candidates. But thank you, thank you, staff, again. And, uh, with that, Serena, do we have anything else?
Uh, no, I do just want to say one more thank you to not only the department heads, but also the supervisors. So Erica de la Cruz, our city clerk, Padre Castillo, our assistant project manager, engineer, uh, Jonathan Arceo, who's our finance manager, and Bree De Leon, as well as some of the community development, uh, department, who's also assisted with the interns, so.
Don't forget the parents.
And the parents and families, yes, thank you. All right, we'll come up for a quick picture. Interns, can I have you guys come up here? Uh, just right up here, right?
Still working, they're still wearing a square here.
Ready, one, two, three.
You did amazing. Thank you.
We already have two hundred items for you to review.
Okay.
One way for the hottest day, I'm watching this suit.
Thank you.
No, I think we have maybe like, um, I'd be fine.
I love it, you have to send that to me.
Just the first one, I'm trying to face.
All right, thank, thank you. Uh, we're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council about any item, not on the agenda, might do so at this time. Speakers are limited to two minutes for each person. Fifteen minutes total will be allowed for one subject. Please state your name and address for the record before presentation. Do we have anybody for public comment?
Gino Ross, F four-three Cairo Avenue. Uh, I just want to let you guys know that the city employees are doing an awesome job. I, I, the other day, I was down my street, there was a slurry ceiling, crack ceiling and stuff. But the only thing I do have is, uh, the on-mass, where you guys put the stop sign and the speed bumps and everything. Everything, that's awesome, but I don't know if you guys go out there, on Taylor, there's no crosswalk. You guys got crosswalks on the other end, but you guys want crosswalks from Taylor to go to the other side. And all those kids run and stuff, you got those lights that are awesome, because when I go cruising around in my golf cart, I'm looking around and I see stuff. And I said, you guys did an awesome job making these crosswalks, stop signs, lights and everything, but there's no crosswalk going across the tailor. And then, uh, coming in, into town, getting to the speed bump, you guys don't have a, another sign with a speed bump to let notify people.
On the second one?
On the second one coming, uh, south, uh, northbound.
About south.
You got the, you got the one going south, but you don't have the one going north.
Okay. Yurlyes.
And, uh, and then, uh, over here, I don't know if you guys know this, on Sherwood, where it says crossing school, whatever, it, it has the G, they put it backwards. So I'm just, you know, I see a lot of stuff. I see a lot of stuff that, you know, I mean, because I work for the city of Delano, and there's a lot of stuff over there too that we get to. But me driving around and stuff, I start noticing a bunch of stuff and, you know, I mean, and then I, and another thing, I don't know if you guys ever do an eye, uh, like go around town checking streetlights? Uh, I know a lot of people don't understand, uh, know, but you can call it in, there's a number on the pole. But I don't know, there's a lot of res- in the neighborhood over here, there's a lot of lights out. So I'd be driving around at night and just looking around, so.
Gino, you have to take a picture, and then we have online report, reported it.
See, and that's the bad thing, I don't know, I do that stuff. All right, that's all I have to say.
We're going to deputize you. We're going to make you the official inspector. All right, is there anybody else for public comment? All right, I'm going to be closing public comment. Moving on to consent agenda, consent agenda consists of items, the staff's opinion, routine, and non-controversial. These items are approved in one motion, and if a council member or member of the public requests to remove a particular item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss, um, or remove a, a particular item in the consent agenda? See, now I'm going to close, uh, the, close, uh, well, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Is there any council member that would like to discuss or pull a, a particular item on the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Maricano, second by Councilmember Gutierrez. Madam Clerk, may I have, uh, roll call, please?
Yes, Marion.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilor Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. No public hearings today. Administrative agenda, approve a resolution of number twenty-two-five dash one-twenty-two, a resolution of the City Council, the City of McFarland, approving the additional of an animal control code enforcement to their current staffing structure. Ms. Sarah, uh, Serena McEwen, please.
Yes, thank you, Serena McEwen.
I said Serena. It's my Spanish.
The City of McFarland is proposing the addition of one animal control code enforcement officer at the recommendation of the City Council Ad-Hoc Committee. Um, this would help alleviate some of the increased calls to, for stray animals, sheltering needs, and municipal code enforcement, which have strained the city's limited staffing. Current coverage gaps, especially during evenings, weekends, and staff absences, have resulted
Current coverage gaps, especially during evenings, weekends and staff absences, have resulted in delays and reduced public safety response. This new position will improve service delivery, ensure timely responses and enhance community safety through proactive, uh, a more proactive enforcement. The estimated annual cost is fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars to seventy-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which is funded by the general fund, uh, and staff recommend council adopt this resolution and I'm open to any questions.
Okay, I'm gonna open up to the public. Anybody have questions, concerns regarding this item? With the potential new hire for code enforcement, animal control. Seeing none, I'm gonna bring him back to the council. I'll start with Ms. Councilmember Gonzalez. Do you have any questions, concerns?
No, I don't have any.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
No questions.
Councilmember Perez?
None.
Vice Mayor?
No questions.
Uh, the only comments I have, Serena, is, is something that is needed. Uh, our interns and everybody knows how much our streets, how, how much they cost, even Gino, he works in Delano. So, uh, yeah, and, uh, we still have a lot of problems with these semis driving through our streets, uh, when they know code enforcement's not here and, and other things. So I think it needs to be addressed because if this is gonna cost sixty, eighty thousand compared to damaging a, a road that's costing us over a million dollars, it kind of offsets. But, um, I don't have no questions or comments. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion?
Motion by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Gutierrez. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Marion.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilor Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now moving on to, no, item number seven, approve a resolution, twenty twenty-five dash one twenty-four, resolution of the city council, the city of McFarland, approving their professional service agreement with KW Investigations for on-call background and investigate, investigating services.
Good evening. Good evening. Uh, tonight, we're requesting council approval of an on-call as-needed professional services agreement with KW Investigations to provide background and investigative services. At the direction of the ad hoc committee, the council, uh, the city will outsource background investigations to allow internal staff to dedicate more time to operations. Our primary provider for these services is Martin, Paris and Mullins Investigations and we will continue to utilize them. However, this agreement ensures the city has another option in the event of capacity issues, urgency or sensitive, or the, the sensitive nature of a project. KW Investigations, led by Kenny Williams, brings extensive experience within, with the city of McFarland, strong knowledge of investigative and disciplinary processes and a full understanding of our policies and procedures, which allows him to provide immediate support without learn, without the learning curve of other consultants would face. And I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. McEwen. I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody have questions, concerns regarding this contract? Seeing none, I'm gonna clo, close that, I'm gonna bring it back to council. I'll start with Ms. Councilmember Gonzalez.
No, I don't have any questions.
Councilmember, uh, Gutierrez?
No questions.
Councilmember Perez?
None.
Vice Mayor?
No question.
Um, I just wanna make a quick comment. Uh, the reason, uh, we're, we're outsourcing, our police department has done a, a fabulous job with the backgrounds. Um, uh, obviously, we know what was hired here five, ten, I mean, ten years ago and stuff. And they did, their due diligence as far as hiring people with not a checkered background. And, but I think it's important now that we have two different sources to, um, go in depth with as far as the backgrounds and allow our p, police officers to, uh, enforce the law and then investigate, because we're, we're committed to investigate, to solve these twenty-eight unsolved homicides. Obviously, we wish we could solve them all, but it's just to free them from, from this administrative duty and then therefore they could get out there and, and get some, some closure for families and justice for people. So, uh, with that, I have no other comments. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Maricano, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Marion.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilor Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, uh, that moved, that finishes our administrative agenda. Moving on to reports of city council committees, special district meetings, uh, current NDC. Paul's not here. Uh, they're having an annual dinner next in September. That's the only thing I have to report, because obviously the meetings are during the day and Paul is my alternate. So moving on to current lo, uh, local agency formation commission, this is LAFCO, uh, bless you. Um, I wanna, we were just at the Parks and Rec meeting, uh, they were doing the feasibility study and, um, obviously, LAFCO came with some recommendations. They had three options, but what they, they concluded was a multi-step process and proposed. They concluded that the, the governance reform transitioned the, the Parks and Rec Board of Directors to elected appointed members by the city, appointed by the city council and, and to them by the current county board of supervisors, based on population representation. This would bring enhanced coordination. They would use new governor structure, governance structure to foster inter-agency collaboration and explore service agreements that are not here. And then bring some financial stabil, stabilization, prioritizing resolving the district's debt that's owed and addressing deferred maintenance. Once financially stable, uh, uh, sta, stability is achieved, further structures, changes may be considered. As this is a recommendation that obviously it's an independent company and it comes out outside city of, the city of McFarland and the Parks and Rec, that was their top recommendation for the city, the city to absorb the Parks and Rec. And what they mean absorb was make it a three-position appointed by the city council and two by the board of supervisors. And what that means, that when they're appointed by the board of supervisors, we don't lose that district. We don't lose that, uh, those boundaries where that tax revenue is coming in. And that's what was felt, was, was felt, was mentioned, was not mentioned at this, at this board meeting when I asked for, what was the recommendation? And, and so residents didn't hear that, but we have, we have the documentation, we have the receipt. So let me go back to, to this recommendation, um, what, um, what they've actually provided last week on Wednesday. Um, I'm not gonna go into the mayor's about, not the mayor's position, but the ci, uh, the city financial condition. The administrator secretary, administrator secretary said the city was, um, well, according to this, the study that the city was in financial difficulties just as, as, uh, as a Parks and Rec. So we had our finance director and our city manager correct these measures as far as like the, the success the city has had the last five years. Uh, obviously, five years ago, the city hadn't done audits in five, four, four years. And then this, the one that did the investigation, he didn't, he pointed out that five years ago, this was the problem. And then they had material weaknesses and deficiencies. So what he felt to relay was that it was a major improvement for the last five years. We've been on point. We've actually, then that's how we're able to get these grants, not only state and federal, because our staff are doing their job. The key achievements, we expanded our public safety services. We went from two police officers, chief of police, to almost close to thirty. Is, is that correct, Captain? Okay. Uh, first time road improvements in decades. Some of you have lived here sixty years, I don't know, maybe a little longer, maybe a little less. A lot of these roads were never addressed. I mean, I got complaints everywhere. We've, we've, uh, repaired or reconstructed over forty-three roads, uh, yearly, is that correct? In the last, and then we got ten coming and the two overpasses. Uh, new residential and commercial development, upgraded our water. There was issues that they brought about our water and waste infrastructure. And then our general fund has grown steadily from by six hundred to eight hundred thousand annually. And that's not including other things that are coming in. And that was driven by our city council, our new staff, that conservative budgeting, increased local revenues and use of grants and transfers and investments. The city maintains a healthy reserve. We don't owe any money, we don't owe any money. And the individual said that the city wasn't, was gonna be in deficit because of a police, uh, facility that's gonna cost fifteen million dollars. Well, obviously, he did a terrible job because the five million doll, we're not gonna be in a deficit. We're doing, we're building that police facility, which we're breaking ground in twenty twenty-five. We're, it's five million and we're gonna do it by phase. So what that means is dispatch police officers, they're gonna have, they're gonna have their facility. And as, as we continue to get more grants, we're gonna build out. So we're not gonna put the city in a deficit. So these are things that are gonna be, um, and revised completely because, uh, the information that was presented in this board, um, I might as well call it, the individual wasn't too happy with me. So another, another personal, um, and we asked him to revise it because it was gonna be, it was gonna be as far as Parks and Rec and our city and he still hasn't. But that's, that's another story, but, uh, but the whole, the whole commissioners last week were very disappointed with that report. So just to be transparent and in our city, in our audits, our audits will tell you right there, there's, the audits are presented in time, they're, they're given to the whole public. When we post the agenda, everything that comes with the agenda, there's a staff report attached to that. So you have three, four days to review any item that you wanna discuss in our city council. That's why every item I ask for public comment or questions, because that's how we are, we, we're transparent. We're not gonna present an agenda and say, here you go, just approve this. So let me just, let me just go off of that, right? Now, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna go off of today's audits, um, for the Parks and Rec and just to be what their auditor said, uh, or he actually put down in the findings. And it just basically said that, you could read, what, what, what presented, it says that there, they were in a deficit this past year, twenty twenty-four, close to four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. And there's a lot of programs, a lot of grants that are being taken away from the state, uh, from different, different things that are coming in. And it's just not the revenue. And the, the problem is, we as a council, you guys don't see the, you don't see the complaints, the concerns about the Parks and Rec, about the services. There's, there's the complaints about the city as well, but when we do get those complaints, we address them. These complaints were, have been going on for the last four years. And when we asked the board to take action, no action was taken. So in the last year, it, that deficit continues to grow, to grow. It's gonna have to be paid out one time or another, but here's the thing that I just wanna express. I wanna just let know all the residents that we, we tried, we're trying to, to partner up, to, we tried several times to partner up with the Parks and Rec, because we're all a community. It shouldn't be any personal attack against me or a council member. It should be, well, the community, because who suffers? Not only our kids, also our elders. There's a lot of programs that have been lost. And so it's all about accountability. Um, if we weren't addressing our public safety, our infrastructure, our water like we have in the last five years, plus the staff that we have now, where we've been allocated close to sixty million coming for not just new water wells, new wastewater, uh, treatment, uh, facilities, I could go on and on, a police station. I mean, and that's the fact that our staff is doing the work, but by the direction of us. And that's, that's the only thing that we're trying to do. We try to partner up with the Parks and Rec. We had meetings with them, say, hey, let's do a joint agreement where we tackle this together. But there was some, there was some discussion, they never came to the meeting and that's what it is. People are talking that we want too much power, we want this. It's no. It, it's called accountability for your taxpayers' money. And we're not trying to do anything that the Parks and Rec are doing at the same time. We're just trying to provide those services. Regar, regardless if it's a swimming pool, regardless if it's a facility or programs. I mean, if, if you guys get the opportunity, log into TAFT, uh, Tab's website and you would see what I'm talking about. If you can't go to TAFT, you'll see all these programs that they have with less revenue coming in. And my, my biggest problem is like, why don't we have that here in McFarland? Why don't we have this for our students? Why don't we have this for our elders? Why don't we have meals on wheels? Why don't we have that? And everybody wants to say, oh, he's, everybody wants to point, he's the bad guy, you know what I mean? He's attacking people. It's not attacking, it's just asking those hard questions. And some people are like, oh, we don't need a swimming pool. Well, that's your opinion, but that's not everybody's opinion. A swimming pool doesn't bring any revenue, but it brings a life skill. Uh, there's other things for our seniors. We need to have a facility for them, for our, our youth. And, and the problem is, this was never addressed and everybody knew there was a problem. But now everybody's thinking, oh, the city wants to take over, they wanna take away jobs, they wanna do this, they wanna do that. Look, they're in a financial, in a bad financial, for anybody that knows, I'm gonna read this, what they, they didn't wanna read today in the meeting. Substantial, uh, doubt about the district's ability to control, to continue as a going, uh, going concern. The financial statements have been prepared, assuming the McFarland, Parks and Rec in California will continue going, is a, is a great concern as discussed in note eleven in financial statements. The district has experienced significant operating losses, a declining, declining cash reserves and in the end of the year in a deficit fund balance, raising concerns about the ability to contol, to continue as it, as it is going. Manag, management evaluation and advanced conditions and management plans regarding those matters are described on note eleven. The financial statements do not include any adjustments that might be resolved from the outcome of the certainty. Our, our opinion is, is not modified disrespect to this matter. And then furthermore, uh, a two hundred thousand dollar loan, a two hundred thousand line of, two hundred thousand, thousand dollar line of credit was pulled in July so they could continue with operations. People, it's real simple. If you're already in debt and you're pulling to, to continue operations, there's, there's a big problem. And the thing is, as elected officials here, we're just doing our, our duty to expose that and say, look, there's a problem. Nine months down the line or a year, uh, Mr. Vidal Montes, do you wanna speak since you're a financial guru and I'm not? As far as where potentially they could be going?
Well, based on the information we had at the June sixteenth meeting, um, we projected about two years before, um, well, two years before they essentially are at a complete deficit. But based on these financial findings, it looks like it's much worse than that. So, um, I, I, I would say, within the next year or so, it's, it's gonna be tough sledding. Um, it's hard to know based, without having current financial data, but, um, um, based on these current numbers, it's, it's much worse than I originally anticipated. And I think much worse than, than anyone really anticipated, including LAFCO that made those recommendations, which was based off of outdated financial data. Um, now that they have this, I'm sure some of those recommendations may, may adjust.
Yeah, and, and residents, and that's just being transparent. I'm not just telling you, those are the documentations. So with that, I mean, uh, what's the future? LAFCO oversees special districts like the Parks and Rec and they make recommendations. The problem I have is, as a commissioner, I said, why are we letting this, this ship sink? Why can't we do something? Because at the end of the day, who's the one that's gonna suffer? And I told those commissioners, they, they, they told me I was crazy for trying to take a debt on. And I goes, I'm not crazy. I said, it's a council, it's through the council, I said. Because at the end of the day, who's the one that's gonna suffer six, eight months down the line? When they can operate or pay into, uh, pay for operations or any, or try to get another loan because they already own this loan and they already owe debt. But anyways, the financials are, I just wanna express to the whole community that's watching the live stream. We're, we tried, we're trying, we're gonna continue to fight, we're gonna, I, I extended another offer to them. I said, let's partner up, let's, let's forget about this and let's make this happen for the community. Uh, we'll see where, where this goes, so. But that's all I have to report for LAFCO and yes, it was a terrible report and they're gonna be, it's gonna be revised. So, thank you. I'm moving on with, so to answer your question, there's no swimming pool coming in the next two years, okay? So just, uh, Delano mosquito abatement.
Delano, Delano mosquito abatement has been doing fog, fog trucks to spray our, and to suppress our mosquitoes population in our neighborhoods. Um, this past week, I believe they did some areas in the city. Um, they base it off the, uh, I don't know if you guys have ever seen the little sticker cards that are stuck in the trees. Those are there to, for the, uh, mosquito department or a biologist to research and see how many mosquitoes are in the area. Then they decide what areas are going to be fogging. So it's important that if you do see them, leave them out there because they do come around and inspect those. Um, it's very important. So we have had a, a suppression of mosquitoes and, you know, hopefully in the next month, we'll start seeing the cooling temperatures and they go away. But give us a call if you need.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District? Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Now moving on to council statements and report on their own initiative, council members may make a brief announcement or a brief report on their own activities. In addition, council members may ask a question of staff or the public for clarification on any matter. Provide a reference to staff and other resources for information. Request staff to report to the city council at a later meeting concerning any matter. Furthermore, the city council or any member thereof may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. We'll start with Ms. Councilmember Gu, uh, Gutierrez.
Well, nothing much to say, but just, this is a good informational meeting, even for me. Um, I wanna thank all the community members that came out here, especially, I wanna thank our interns, our department heads for keeping our city running smoothly. Um, I'm one of the newer council members and trust me, I've seen how everything. Um I'm one of the newer council members, and trust me, I've seen how everything operates, um I have no complaints. Um I really love my city, and thank you for everybody for all their hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Um just uh thank you everyone for coming, interns, thank you for the hard work that you did. And uh Mayor Saoud, just thank you for the clarification on that uh meeting that we attended today and what LaFco had to say, thank you very much.
Councilmember uh Perez?
Thank you, yes, thank you to all the interns, thank you for um. Those of you that were their support systems, I'm sure that they learned a lot from you. Um because you are very professional individuals that we trust uh for you to, to um. Guide these uh interns, also um I wanna thank uh Marion for doing his. Due diligence with all this Parks and Rec, um and for, you know, for speaking out with the commissioners, with the his um. The commissioners with the county, we do definitely need um uh Parks and Rec that is functional. Um there are a lot of pieces missing within the Parks and Rec, and hopefully we can get those um bound together soon. Um that's about it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perez, Vice Mariano?
Yeah, um last week we did it to, uh well, ma- mayor, well, mayor's part of the LaFco, but I, I myself attended the LaFco meeting. And um got to understand a little bit about how that department works and also the Parks and Recs. And then today, we attended the Parks and Recs meeting, or a partial event, unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, we say, we had a run to this meeting, but a busy day. Um there's a lot of greatness out of this, you know, if we can get this done, if we can work together. You know, like I say, you know, you guys hate the, the Parks and Recs team, we don't hate nobody, trying to work with the community, when we came into council. Or when I came into council, I wanted a community where I could retire, right, live out my, my years of, of, at some point. Old age and and you know, and some, part of that is to bring back, uh you know, the services that we had, you know, I remember. The Parks and Recs had a great uh preschool program, teacher norm, I, you know, my children went through that program, um they had. More events out there, more programs, the pool, you know, all these great things, and they've gone away, and they, you know, they say, well, you guys are going against. You're, you're, you're just talking bad about them, we're not talking bad about them, we're talking about the greatness of they, what they had, and we wanted to bring it back. There's no negativity, we're talking about the good times, let's bring those good times back, so I know Saoud's worked really hard on that. Um I s- um I always tell him, I think you're, you're gonna drive yourself crazy, everybody thinks we're crazy, but. I, I think at the end, it's, it's all just because we wanna make this town livable and 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 have all, everything out there that you deserve as residents. Thank you to the staff for all their hard work, I know there's a lot going on, the interns, I know they've enjoyed it, I know, yeah, I can hear their excitement of what they learned. What they're gonna take back to their schools, to their, back to the universities, and um continue to learn more. Uh thank you everybody for being here tonight, and that's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and just, just on a personal note about, a personal note about the Parks and Rec. The majority of us, except the, the, the younger folks out here, remember those days when we would go to the pool, we'll go play basketball. Or the hut and be Mr. White in ping pong, or pool, so, yeah, so, so, and. And, okay, well, sometimes, and we, we all remember that, and and the big problem is a lot of these individuals that. Yeah, a lot of those individuals that make these comments, they're, they're not, I'm not, they, they weren't part of that, so they don't know what it feels like. Uh a lot of Delano residents back then, they were like, we'll come over here, now it's, it's changed, now I have to go to Delano and go use their pool and gym and. It's kinda embarrassing when I'm coming out of the pool and, like, hey, what's the mayor paying, swimming in our pool, and then I have students like, when are we gonna get our pool, and I'm like. Oh, can't, we can't win anywhere, you know what I mean, so anyways, it, it just resonates with. Not just the pool, it's other services that our kids need, elders, and it's just, just not to beat a dead horse, it's just something that needs to. Get done, and if the continued bickering, all we're doing is exposing the problem. Exposing the problem has been going on for a lot of years, and just trying to get them to mitigate this problem, so that we could actually address this. And then our sixteen to twenty thousand residents are, they could, they could enjoy different programs. Not just the pool, or maybe just go play basketball, or just go play at the hut, uh there's so many things in Taft and different things. That we should at least have one, some of that here in McFarland, we deserve better, so. Uh and that's, that's, that's why um a lot of people, they're, they say I'm crazy, because uh, yeah, it's a. It's not, I'm going to, I'm not going after anybody, I'm just asking those hard questions, and those people live here, their families live here, and they're just hearing one piece of this. One side of the story, what they need to hear is, how about nine months or a year, they don't have a job? Wha- what, what are they gonna say, are they gonna blame the mayor, are they gonna blame the city council? That's what we're not, we're trying to avoid, if, if they go bankrupt, the county takes over those facilities. They'll, they'll take over those facilities, we have no, no say in what they did, they decide to do with those facilities. Doesn't mean that that's gonna happen, hopefully it doesn't, but if you're a numbers guy, and then. Police officers are here, the cow purse that they have is a very hea- healthy cow purse, it's a two point seven or two point five at fifty-five. That's, that's amazing, so there's gotta be some, there, there, there's gotta be something done where we can actually. Work together and try to get this done for just the community, nobody's trying to be the hero here, we're just trying to better the community. And what it deserves, but with that, I have nothing else to add, and that ends our regular uh council meeting. I wanna thank everybody for attending, our interns, our city staff, great job, interns, uh Mr. Resendez, or attorney, you're gonna pay for you guys' dinner. Um so they're right behind you and right here, so, thank you so much, have a good night. Uh Nathan, our close session.